November 25th, 2019.
I'm going to accuse myself from this subject. I do all the perks for it. And soon this can be...
Yeah, basically, right now, this is 193 Emerson Street. A lot of people know as the old Kizier Farm. So it's roughly about 60 acres. And it's being split into four lots. The existing home and barns and everything would be on one of the lots. So it's the existing property on this lot and then three newly created lots. Oh, yeah. Yeah, this lot's 171, 735, 526. This one, 305. Farisit out of West Springfield. Lucky you.
So you're dividing one piece into three?
Yeah, you have 60 and two... well, it'll be four total. Yeah, three newly created and then the existing properties will be on this one. And they're all good size, 15 acres, 720. And then the existing home will be on 16.
Same street, we're not seeing the amount of floor there.
There's no locus. So everyone except that at the...
At the registry?
At the registry.
Okay.
What's the problem?
There's no locus. There are two. Yes, there's supposed to be one. So we sign off on it as we check it out.
Okay, at the registry.
And that probably rejected at the... Four or six or so.
Okay.
Other than that, there's no reason not to. I don't even know why we require it, other than we don't. It's the registry deeds, because I couldn't care less if it was...
Is it just something we can add on?
Yeah, they have to show this and the surrounding.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, I know what you mean by that. So is it something you guys can sign and we can get that added before we record?
We can't sign the milars to be registered up there, because they'll kick them.
Got it.
As far as officer, I could... we don't need the locus, but I know there are a lot of them.
Understood. Yeah, that's good. That's why I was asking if you guys could sign off and I can get them added before we record. It's gonna be actually added before we sign off.
Just like, if this isn't on here...
Right.
They won't register it. The only reason why you bring it up today is it could be a lot of push-chase work. They've had them kicked before. I'm surprised they don't know why I put it on there. Trying to think if there's another way around it. We can't... we keep the milar, and then you take the one to the registry.
Right, yeah, basically, I just need the one milar just to record.
I mean, yeah, I guess in past practice, if you've had the experience of, you know, ANRs being returned to you without a locus, you know...
Yeah, the only procedure I kept running through is having to wait for another use of this. Because I don't mind adding, I wish you thought that, but...
Which you type in.
We close next week if we could. Basically, we have a cash buyer on this piece. These would go on the market next year, and this is rented right now, but when the lease is...
He left and never came back. Well, I'd make a motion to approve this if it had the locus. And if it goes through, then now we have to do this, and that individual is dropped off at the town hall. We wouldn't have to wait for the next meeting and sign off on it.
I can say, if you guys want, I might drive this to the town hall.
We're down at town hall, and we know one's there, but each of us have been signed.
Okay, and that's town hall. Okay, yeah. That'd be amazing. Yeah, just because we started, like, you know, the process of wetlands and pinning, and we started this, like, that...
We don't start a dividing of properties on January 20th.
Okay, and it'll be when it's ready, same these two milars, four prints, for the copies?
Two milars.
Okay, and do you want to keep the four MAs, or do you want to take what that... you can keep them. Okay.
That won't change.
Okay. Got it.
I'll listen on here.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion that we approve this ANR conditionally, that it's returned with the locus and the check for the four lots.
Yeah.
Five lots.
Well, I have the check here.
You have the check.
It's four.
Four lots.
Yeah, this is just woods. This is the end of the woods.
The four lots.
So your motion is to approve the ANR conditionally, on the condition that it is returned to the town hall, to Catholic Land.
With the locus.
With the locus.
Okay.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, all right, sounds good. All right, I appreciate it. And everyone, happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you. Nick here.
I'll make the motion to close the...
Oh, it's okay.
We'll leave those at town hall.
I did not. But my understanding is that... Because I checked with her yesterday, or not yesterday, last week. And she said that it may have been mailed to the town hall. I have the number, but I don't have, like, the physical bill. Like, I have the accounting, but I don't have the bill.
Well, it's not in the hours, so we didn't get it.
Okay. Yeah, she said it was mailed out the 15th. We'll ensure that you get it.
That would be for the first quarter of... And then when it gets, uh, updated, approximately how much more?
I have, uh, I don't have that broken down into labor hours or, you know, direct costs. It's like $2,500.
So for the next week?
Yeah, I can have that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the regular planning board meeting to reconvene after the two public hearings.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
You can recuse after the meeting is over. You can recuse after the hearing's opened.
All right, it's now 5:15, correct? So it's now 5:15 PM. We're going to continue the planning board. Town of Granby Hall of Public Hearing on Monday, November 25th, 2019, at 5:00 PM at One Library Lane, Oak Arundel Library, top floor. In nature of this hearing, it's considered a petition of Jason Richard, applicant, Town of Granby, owner, seeking site plan approval under section 6.3 of the Granby zoning bylaw, considering siting for the Veteran's Royal Park below, located at 257 through 259 State Street, Granby, Mass., Northern Mass., 9-C-8. Okay, just for the people that are here for this, what we're gonna ask is that the people come up and present, and at that time, we'll ask questions, and at that time, I'll open it up to the general public. If you were saying, ask any questions, please come up and sign your name on the piece of paper up here. And we'll go through the room, kind of go right to left as I work my way around the room. Okay?
Just for the record, Lillian's accused herself due to... you're on the butters list?
Yes.
No, no, I'm referring to somebody else. So Lillian, our board, a board member. Not you?
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
The C R doesn't work.
Jell?
We have preliminary drawings or a perm review. We don't have stamped drawings at the moment. I'm still working with the landscape architect to get the final drawings. We're also in the process of value engineering projects based on some cost estimates we got. Don't know if you want to look at the unstamped drawings now, or now's that time to have a conversation and feedback?
We can look at them. Take a look at them, see what they look like.
I know we're not gonna have approval today with the stamped drawings.
Right. So, yeah, definitely see what they look like.
We would appreciate any comments the others have, you know, to see. And next time, I will bring my laptop and we can put it on the TV.
Do you want a general overview, narrow?
Yeah, I want you to kind of walk us through what changes.
So this is the existing conditions plan right now. They're showing what's on the site, gravel parking lot, existing tree line. Site preparation plan, showing pushing a tree line back. Existing utilities. We're also showing how you can see the layout of the park. We have, it's a large open field at the moment. Mostly the gray up from existing topography. There's parking up on North Street. The park generally consists of the memorial wall to holding honorable plaques, some open green space, and some landscaping features. And the military tape display put back into the site away from the street. Not having too much hardscaping. Those are the drawings we're working with the landscape architect at the moment.
Where's the wall facing? Where's the wall facing? Are we facing it on the west?
Uh, the wall, you'll see it from North Street. This is 202.
Right.
It's North Street. So you'll see it along North Street.
North Street.
And coming up 202 from this one, you will see a lot of the taller landscape features, all the trees.
Is this the tree that Dave DeRocher, the highway superintendent, recommended keeping?
No, that tree is right about here.
And it's not being kept?
We'd like to see it taken down. I know it's a unique tree in some regards. It is... We looked at many, many, many layouts for parking on this site and accessible requirements, and we come to the agreement that it'd be best to take it down. Also, from a maintenance standpoint, that's a drop a lot of walk-through. I know that has complications with the ground there.
So the existing building's coming down as well?
The existing garage, we would like to see removed from the site. If it must stay, we can work around it, but we'd like to see it go away. So in relation to the parking, the building, I mean, essentially, we could lose three parking spaces if no...
Who is it that makes the decision whether the building, the existing building stays or goes? Is that select order? Yeah, that's what my thought would be.
Then I have some other views, a view you can see from the street. This is a more detailed view of the materials and dimensions. Some views from the street. Here are some site sections. So this is what you'd see from North Street. We have the taller wall with the local stone veneer, working with local suppliers to get some new stone. Low granite wall, and you see our lines of trees, flat wall. So that's the North Street view.
Highest, a low granite wall.
Low granite wall, decent tall. This helps add the depth and texture to the... The wall itself is seven feet tall, but on the outside, we're burning the earth up to it from the street. The wall's set 20 feet from the street. So we're gonna ramp here up, so you'll see a lot less of that on the outside. It's gonna be flat, real stone, concrete, fake stone. The idea is it feels more like a stone wall you find in the woods, a little more...
So but behind it, it's seven feet from the ground up?
Behind it, it's seven feet, but that's where the honorable plaques are housed. So from the inside here, it has more of a person for scale. So it's taller, but there's a bit of, there's a change in material and stone, and then the plaques will sit in that rhythm that wraps around. So it's tall, it's compact, and it has various features covered. It has some elevation here of the wall itself. Site section. See, these are wider elevations of the wall. This is the North Street side, this is one of the backsides. You can see it from the street or from in the ward, this faces the tree line. See, there's the exterior elevations and the interior face elevations. You'll see the trees are planted behind, so you'll have a taller wall, leaves and grays and canyon rocks, and birch trees beyond, and then the tree line beyond that. And then this is the opposite side of the North Street face. This is where the honorable plaques will start and wrap the corner.
Impressive.
So the plaques actually go right around it?
The plaques are, today, an L-shaped wall, and the plaques will start on one leg, and then turn the corner, and they'll come down this way. And it's intended for leaving room to add, if not more. Both that's we find more people to be on the, or contribute for previous conflicts, and it's kind of a good program. Other sheets, there's just a lot of construction details and all the bits of how it goes together.
How did you come up with the handicap parking, please? There's nothing I really can do, so...
Right. I figured, um, to, I've done a lot of research. There's percentages for buildings and other stuff, but for parks, it's not very well defined in code. So we opted for two. If we remove another spot, we can add, and they wrote van accessible. So we can, we can make more than accessible parking spaces, or van accessible parking spaces, and we...
Parking spaces, yeah.
Seven.
There's seven.
Eight.
Eight.
And again, we lose three if we keep the garage. The idea with parking is, we add, that move spaces, they seem to fit in nicely. Parking, the general rule, is accessible. If we had planned parking for a large event that happens here, we'd be paving most of the site, there wouldn't be much room for the park. So we opted to fit eight parking spots, thinking for average, everyday use, that would be plenty. And then when there is an event in town, like a parade, people park all over for that or at the churches.
Okay, I just didn't know what you came up with for a formula, but I'm fine with it. I mean, it's not that you're gonna get any closer anyway, so if you're handicapped, you can park in these others as well.
Right.
One of our design plans was to make this as accessible as possible. Obviously, it's what codes needs, but these all meet handicap with...
Is this the entrance area? So where would the ramp be for...
So the idea is there's these planting boxes that the trees are in, and then every entrance between them meets accessibility in terms of slope and access. So there's no steps. There's no ramps anywhere in the project. It's all foot slopes, less than defined as a ramp.
So, but each spot, so my question, so someone parks the car here, for him, is there enough room for them to get around and get in there?
So the accessible spaces, the spot in the middle here is not a parking spot. It's a clear space.
Okay.
So that's the accessible entrance.
Yep.
You can walk through.
Okay, that's what I was asking, that's my thought.
So what are the stamp plans gonna show us different than what we're looking at right now, other than vegetation?
You'll be seeing a more detailed grading plan, so spot elevations, and a more detailed topography plan. You'll have a drainage plan, you'll have a more detailed soils plan, and a planting plan. And as we tweak some of these details to fit, our budget, not much will be changing, but some will be changing. Some big differences are all the landscape detail in terms of drains and utilities and drainage.
So once we have, once we have stamp plans, then typically, we send them off to fire police, DPW. And like you said, those will show all the elevations. So for instance, DPW would be interested in plowing. Fire department, police department may be interested in access to make sure they can get in there to do a rescue or something along those lines. Other than that, I don't, this is, I'm pretty impressed with it. I think it's gonna look nice from this, it's really very nice.
So my big question was parking, if there is enough, it's acceptable. It was kind of sound when you finally defined the licenses for what parking requires?
I think space is reasonable.
That's in spaces of the building walls. Is that correct?
Right.
And what we've been told is any events, anything like that, that there'd be space available across the street for any large event, a church, and that appropriate, you know, police for traffic control and stuff would take place. Like the grand opening, I would think, you know, you'd have some police officers there directing traffic and parking everybody across the street and, you know, having some sort of crosswalks for them to access. Like you said, there's not a lot of color out there for providing accessibility for parking. Like you said, there's, there's not a lot of color out there for providing accessibility for parking.
So what we want to do, continue the public hearing until we.
Well, I guess there's any questions from the public to the.
I know the committee would appreciate it if there are any concerns or questions from the budget, so we can address them now, as we wrap up the hearings.
All right, is there any comments, questions from the public at this time? Go on a second, ma'am.
Cindy Watson, five fifty-nine Amber's Road. My concern is the parking area that is in the drawings, in the plans right now, because the, how many spaces were there?
Eight.
Eight spaces. People will be driving in to a space, and when you have people living across the street, and they're backing out of the space because there's no place for them to turn, I'm concerned about them being right on North Street. And people coming up around that corner oftentimes take it a little too fast, and might not be able to step, stop soon enough. I think the, the parking, and because I'm an architect or an engineer, but if the garage was gone, removed, would that be a possible parking area? Would that be used as a parking area?
My understanding is that they're, they're hoping that the garage can be removed. This time, they haven't had approval, that was removed yet. So with that said, if the garage is removed, they'd have eight spaces, without that, you'd have five.
Correct.
And if, would that be it, eight spaces? You would still have the parking on the street where they would have to back out into the street. Were, was there any concern about that from the, the fire or police?
It hasn't gone out to them yet. This is just the beginning of it, as Mr. Capi said earlier. So we have a stamp plan, they bring them to us, and we'll send them off to DPW, the Fire Department, and the Police Department to get their input on it, if there's any concerns with it.
All right, that, that's basically all I have to speak about, because I know that everybody wants to get this thing done and be able to use it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, last, uh, when the initial public hearing was rescheduled, we all met down the cellar and took a look at these plans, and the plans are awesome. My property of what's, um, the park, that's why I'm, I'm here, I'm here to support that park and to ask this board to do what you have to do to expedite your approval and move, let these people move forward with their hard work. Finally, there's a group that's doing something for the town besides GPS, and I, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions, concerns, comments this time? Yes, sir?
Uh, first line is thirteen North Street. The plan is the same as we saw downstairs, last, uh, it's changed. Okay, we're happy with it.
Let's continue this until we have that.
Yeah, it needs to be continued until we have the, the stamp plan, so that we can share it with, with the other department heads and see if they have any concerns.
And typically, we give a continuation to a date circuit. Can we do to a date to be determined?
No.
No, because then you would have to re-advertise.
Do you, do you have an idea when we'd have the stamp plans?
January.
January. Beginning of January, middle of January, end of January?
When do you want, when, when's the schedule to break ground?
Spring. Um, it's all very much determined on, uh, working out, discovering with the landscape architects to wrap up the drawings. We're expecting to have it before the end of January, and then ideally, we break ground in the spring, um, but.
Well, is there a, is there a procurement process?
That's, the next big question is figuring out all those small details of who builds what and when they build it. With a volunteer-led project, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces, it's not like a typical project with one person doing it all. So as far as exact dates and deadlines for construction, that's still unknown at the moment.
So.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, I'm just trying to facilitate this to meet your schedule, so we, in order to continue this, we need a date. So you need to tell us when you're going to have stamp drawings to us.
And in January? How often do you meet?
Every two weeks, we can, we can meet when we need to meet, but we have to announce it tonight.
Yep.
Otherwise, you have to re-advertise.
So you need the second meeting in January?
So January, January twenty-seventh, we have a second meeting in January.
Or February tenth. We still have to recite the plans, get them to the concerned offices within the town. Not only is it, we should go for the first meeting in February, would you be, maybe February tenth?
Well, I, I guess I would, I would say the, the twenty-seventh, and the reason I say that, because if they haven't, like, given it to us, if they don't, we can just look at continuing, that way we're not.
We could do that also, yeah.
Twenty-seventh, first great.
Now I got a, a date to get, but yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to January, Monday, January twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty, at.
Seven, five fifteen?
Five fifteen. And we have to have this board, these members sitting there, because of the two recusals.
Now they can, yeah. They can still do without a necessity, that's, that's.
When they came to, we could do a.
This is court.
Okay. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's going to be continued to January twenty-seventh at five fifteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. I'd love it if it was due justice.
What's up?
Do you have to do this or not?
I made a motion to recess until five hundred and fifty.
Second. Other board members otherwise. All in favor?
Aye.
Now five forty-five, we call the order, the planning board meeting, um, for, um, five forty-five PM, the planning board down at Granby. All the public hearing on Monday, November twenty-fifth at five forty-five PM, at One Library Lane, Old Carter's Library, top floor. The nature of the hearing is to consider the petition of Dollar General by National Design Corp applicant in Granby DG Series LLC owner seeking a special permit under section five point nine two II and five point five nine two III. Considering internal illuminated lighting letter signage above the main entry and the freestanding sign on a retail store located at one eighty West State Street, Grammy Mask, known as map three dash DG dash eleven.
Hi. Um, for the record, my name is Heather Duttco, and I represent the National Design, with sign installation of Dollar General. And I do see, um, the fourth board, they received revised plans.
Yes.
Um, after the public hearing was continued, uh, last month, our dollar general revised sign proposal. And with revisions, I do believe that the only, um, special permit we need is for the permission to install, to stand the sign itself. At the beginning, the signs need to go to size, and by changing it to externally illuminated, we do not need to have special permitting for illumination. But we can just go through each sign separately, and we'll take effect determination, that's just how I interpret it from changes. And if you have extra copies, if you want to see them, see the revisions. Is anyone on the board here, copy, or is it just?
We have, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I have. I just made a lot of notes in case.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, just for point of reference, um, I, I'm a sign consultant, and I work with the signs dollars. So I'm not, I was not involved with the site development at all, I do, I am in contact with the developer in relationship to when signs are going to be placed, but I was not privy to any of the site development, none of the, with any of the meetings, with any of that. So I do not have a lot of knowledge about the history of the, the site, questions that come up, just so people kind of know what my position is here. Um, so the front sign, wall sign, has been reduced to a sixteen inch by seventeen, four and a half inch signage, equals twenty square foot, which I believe twenty-five is about the right for a wall sign. It also meets with ten percent of the wall width, but twenty-five is an absolute. It'll be externally illuminated before goosnacks, and it'll be placed on the raceway, not flush against the building. So the individual channel letters will be on the raceway, um, and it's about an eight inch projection from the building. They are acrylic letters, so they're built light, like a channel letter, lighting channel, the illuminated channel letter, they're acrylic and aluminum, but they're not, they have no electrical components, so they own a light that will come, even with goosnacks.
Are they still yellow?
Yes.
They're still yellow, and light is the goosnack?
Correct, so it has a yellow face, and they have, um, I believe they have a black return, so if you looked at the side of the letter, it would be black, but the face of the letter is white, and that's their typical color. Um, and it is proposed over the entrance elevation, over the entrance doors, which is the side perpendicular to the rest. So it's not on the state side. And in regards to the freestanding sign, it still has a similar look. Um, it's been reduced to a four foot by six foot, which is twenty-four square feet, which I believe is allowed by code, and fifteen foot overall height, which I believe is four thirty-six. The setback is twenty-one point five foot from the parking line, and the code allows, I think it's ten, twenty foot, twenty foot. Uh, it's the same materials, an acrylic face, with an aluminum cabinet, an aluminum pole, and they will do a double-sided, um, goosnack from the top. So each side will have a set of goosnacks, two goosnacks.
Again, no internal lighting memory for this one?
Correct, no internal lighting. But it is an acrylic face, just like the, the channel letters, with an aluminum channel.
How far above the, the, uh, the second sign are the lights? Because obviously, they go, they're higher than the light itself.
Uh, you know, I didn't get a lot of specs on the goosnack lighting, so. Um, I don't know if it's going to lie in there. It looks forty-two. Twenty-six on the front. It looks like they might be about, not quite three foot above the, extending above the sign, is that what you're asking?
Yes. Because I like, the one that's on the store, I mean, obviously attached right to the store.
I'm sorry?
The one that's actually on the store, the lights are, are actually attached to the wall.
Correct.
So.
Correct. So these would project up some, up a few feet above the top of the sign, and then curve down to illuminate on the sign itself.
Is it, is it safe to assume with the detail on the, uh, the wall sign, for the weight, it's going to be kind of similar to?
Yes, they have to, they, yes, so the fixtures themselves will match, um, just how they have to install them on the top of the cabinet, on top of the sign, they have to extend up first, and then.
Um, you have, the, I want to say next to the wall sign, the maximum distance for the wall sign is twelve inches, the maximum projection?
From, yes, it'll be, this will be eight inches, this is thirteen. Oh, sorry, thirteen, no, in fact, the projection was.
Did it say eight from the one that?
Eighteen, I thought it was eighteen.
On the wall sign, on the store?
Correct, the wall sign.
Eight, eight inches from the backside.
Right.
Thirteen to the front. Right, you have a five inch sign.
Right, I thought it was a maximum projection, it was eighteen inches.
In, in your, your general business overlay, um, zone, under a wall sign, it does state that such signs shall be displayed as, to not project more than eighteen inches from the surface of the building or extend beyond the ends of the building.
So that is what?
He's going through thirteen. Read that again.
Um, such signs shall be displayed or.
Back it up, for what was on?
Uh, under general business, though? Yeah, sorry, general business and mixed-use development overlay.
What's the question?
I'm just showing you like eighteen inches. No, that's the right, the right part of the sign, or this one? It's the sign, it's the, he did the process.
Folks, can I just ask a few?
Sorry.
We'll, we'll get, we'll get to everybody else, okay?
Just curious.
Okay, thank you.
And the light that you used is a white.
In, in the, in the goosnack?
Yeah.
Correct.
Uh, I'm just curious, not that you may or may not, no, would be like the watt, right, you don't know, right there?
If there's a limit, if there's something written for a limited wattage, or you have a recommendation, I'm sure that they'll come to you about. a recommendation, I'm sure that they'll come and make that.
Yeah.
So we don't have anything specific in mind? I don't have any problems with what's there, everything meets our bylaws. I do have some things that are better in our bylaws, I think, to be, to be special.
Yeah, the hours, the hours of these, each of these signs will be, what's, what's the, is the street sign, the standalone sign that's going to be on?
No, they'll, they'll shut that off after closing business, so if this restricts from that, I didn't see that there was one in the bylaw, an hour, two hours. Some bylaws specifically state an hour, two hours after closing business, but they'll, they'll shut it off reasonably after closing business.
Do you want to say behind, like within the law?
Yeah, I'm sorry, do you not know what their perspective on, there are three laws.
Well, we can talk about that in the sort of conditions.
And have I put the, the sign, the lights over the front door?
I'm sorry?
Have I put the signs, the lights over the front door sign?
Correct, yeah. I'm sure that they have security lighting on the building, so it's not necessarily that sign.
We could make, we can talk about that, but we can make a condition, no more than one hour before or one hour after closing or something.
Or however, like parking signs or the, parking lot signs, uh, those like scheduled. I don't remember what that detail was.
I don't recall, based on the, um.
We can make a condition on that.
Well, those may be out later, because if the store's closed, parking lot, parking lots meets the end, so employees can leave and stuff.
Right. Yeah, unless you place the condition in your site development, your site plan approval of that Dollar General.
Can you give me?
No, I think based on the iteration between the previous submission, the only, you know, just point for the board to consider is that it is a special permit based on the freestanding sign requires one. The applicant is meeting all of the bylaws if you have, you know, approved them. And your decision should be based on the sign itself and, and not the previous approval of the site plan. So if you're, um, the, the discussion about the, the lighting in the parking lot is, is an interesting one. I'm not sure, I'd, we'd have to review that.
But that's already been addressed.
Correct, correct.
The approval.
Yes, so I think it's fair game for you to condition any approval on the lights to be turned off within a certain time after the close, close of business.
But not the parking lot, not the lights?
I think that's specific to your site plan approval for.
For that.
For that.
We can't go back.
We can't change that, we can make this call aside if we choose to do so.
Except that we don't have the exact detail on that. I don't see the exact detail in that.
Well, we can talk about that. But like I said, usually store, parking lot lights usually out later than the store closes, so employees come out, they can see where they're going, get in their cars. Anything else, do I open up the public? Well, this time we'll open up to the public and as we said, those were here in the last public meeting. I'm going to work my way around the room, start off from the right and go across to the left. I would just ask that you wait to be called upon before you, before you begin, okay? And your name and address if you would to beforehand. So anybody on this side over here, like, any questions, concerns, comments?
I don't think they hear you.
Well, they should, they had no. I don't want their ear for no. Okay, well, we'll start. We'll work our way inside, anyone in the front row?
Yes. My name is Carol Manzarella, I'm with at thirty-four Ferry Hill Road and I'm in a butter, we are in a butter. And I do remember from the last meeting, if you checked your video, you guys, not the last meeting, the meeting with the site and all that, everybody, you guys had said the lights could go off a half hour after the store closes. That was what you all agreed to with the meeting, if you have it in your stuff. So I don't know how this works now that they've changed their signage as far as they meet all the bylaws. So what do we, as the town people, what kind of input, what impact can our input have realistically with the board? Can you answer that?
Well, open to suggestions and things like that. I think one thing we've kind of spoke about was the, the lights and stuff like that, how bright the light's going to be. Those are things we can reference to them, you know, as far as that's concerned too. But again, if a lot of, a lot of it went there, they followed from the guidelines or bylaws, so we can't, you know, they meet the requirements. So there's other things they, you know, they like to see happen, they can take that under advisement and that's at their discretion whether or not they like to do something like that.
Okay, so when Chad, I don't know his last name, he was at the meeting when we were all here, that was talking about monument sign, because you were on, you, the board had mentioned that you were very concerned with the traveling public to keep the small town feel. So that's why you have a building turn sideways and no lighting on the front of Route 202 of the building and all of a sudden, we're talking about pole signs and lighting, not a monument sign, not really small town signage. It would definitely probably, it would fit in at the five corners area, that's a real business type area, but I think that if area, that it in, it's really not conducive as far as being small town front looking. It's a pretty big sign regardless if it's within the bylaws and it's bright. The acrylic, the yellow, it is really going to be bright and you, we all know that. So I'd like to please keep that in mind for that area of town. And we definitely want business and we want to promote businesses to come to town and support them, but we ask them, because I think any developer coming to town is very well aware of bringing these bylaws and the small town feel. And I would hope that they will respect us, the taxpayers and the townspeople that are going to support the business and consider what we would like them to do for, you know, the building is big enough, people aren't going to miss it. And I'm not saying don't have a sign, but I like, if you look at Countryside Animal Hospital, if you look at, I don't know, Class Brass, a lot of the businesses have really tastefully done signs that aren't huge and bright. And I don't know that they're on until ten thirty at night, I don't know, because I don't, they're not, okay. So I guess that's what I want to really say is that I'm disappointed in the lighting. We, it isn't my understanding that the front of the building is facing up towards CNG Machine, correct, not the other way. So that's our, I know it sounds petty, but that's our view, you know, us neighbors, that's what we're looking at. And, you know, we paid a lot of money to live there, like a lot of people do, and it's going to be a lot of light and it's certainly not what we moved there for. And so we'd like them to consider something more small townish than big bright signs. And if I may ask, why are you, the planning board opposed to them having the lighting on the front facing 202 instead of the side? Once you pull into the parking lot, you know you're in Dollar General, so you don't need another big twenty-something foot sign telling you you're there. So I'm wondering why that's necessary?
Could you answer that? Because they didn't, I can answer that, they didn't, they didn't buy my property that's next to it, so there wasn't enough space to turn. I live at one seventy-four.
You're right next to it? I'm glad you're there.
So that, I mean, that's what, if, what they decided to do, what they decided to do based on whatever reasons they want to do it. So that's, you know, I understand your concern there, but like I said, it's based on what they feel is best for their business is what they're looking at, because they want to, you know, I would imagine too that there's certain standards that they're going to follow too, because it's a national brand. You know, so there is a certain thing, like a certain science and things like that. Like no difference to like a, no CVS or McDonald's, or there's certain things that they have to have.
I have a couple of questions, Paul Manzarella, Fair Hill Road. I'm just confused as to where the pole sign is going to face. Is it going to face, it's going to face West Street, Stink Street?
It's perpendicular to West Street. At the entrance door.
So you're making, traveling north and south, 202, you're going to see him, that's the, that's where you're going to see him.
And how far are you in from the road?
Twenty-one point five feet.
Twenty-one feet, so it's a good distance then.
So yes, this West Street?
Yeah.
If you go north and south, is the sign here? It's perpendicular to West Street, at the driver's.
Okay, so, yeah, you know, we really, we really do appreciate that Dollar General has come back over to redoing the bylaws. That's one thing. The actual lighting and the timing of the lighting is really important as well. And it's already been somewhat discussed a bit about, you know, how long the lighting's going to be on after the store, which lighting is going to be on, what the wattage is for the lights. You know, they, that may not sound like much to Dollar General, but it sounds like a, it's meaningful to us in terms of, you know, I just heard you guys say that you don't really know what the specs are on that as far as the town, I'm sure you're going to find out. So those things are important, you know, we're not, you know, we're not trying to kill the business and tell them not to come here and tell them to go away, because they're here, okay? And we're willing to work with that, obviously. We have, we really have no choice. What we're trying to do is minimize wherever we can in terms of brightness, so we don't have to look at it online. That's, I think that's basically what we're looking at. So just, just to know exactly how long it's going to be after they close, I mean, I'm not even aware of the actual time.
And those are, those are the things we'll look at. I know we've talked about before, at the previous meetings, as far as hours of operations, but also I know on our last meeting, and it wasn't the, it was more of a discussion amongst people in the, the audience here, after our meeting had closed and I know some information was brought back to Dollar General. And the reason I know that is based on what is being submitted now and listening to what people are talking and things like that. So something was brought back to them, because they changed what was brought forward last time. So I think, you know, and we're talking about them and being good neighbors and things like that, they, they made a lot of changes to what was, I think originally proposed, was going to be proposed.
Yeah, and we're very grateful for that. Just like the little, you know, little things that seem little to a Dollar General and maybe even to the planning board in Granby, but as you know, as the old saying goes, you can't see it from our house, or we can't see it from our house. And I know the gentleman behind me can definitely see it from his house, but that's, that's his thing. So just in terms of the wattage, the timing of the lighting, which lighting, the parking lot lighting, you know, those kind of things, we really appreciate that, you know, the board would consider, you know, softening a little bit, so.
I understand.
We're coming into the middle of this, as you know, we, we bought our property, we didn't notice what's going on. We worked our all lives to get to Ferry Hill Road, we are so happy to be here. And I've worked for a lot of municipalities, been invited to planning boards, worked on the board of commissioners.
May I just give you a name?
Susan Knight, thirty-two Ferry Hill Road. Sorry, thank you. So I guess I have a couple of concerns. One is, thank you Dollar General, and I would love for businesses to know that our planning board and our zoning board is really, you know, great to work with and if they have a business, but I also think always that we have to tell them what the character is. The allure of Granby is that we're a small town that's just gorgeous. It's the most beautiful place, I think, of Western Mass and, or maybe all of Mass. And, and I'm heartbroken in a way that we are chipping away in a, in a way that is taking away from our allure. Personally, I don't think we need, it's a done deal, but I don't think we need more single plastic use, low quality food stores. Had I come, I'd be open business, I'm opening two businesses in town. My husband's a filmmaker, I'm a property manager, we're going to be doing a lot of business around, I'll join some wards, I'll do some work, I'm a retired chef. There's a lot of possibilities for us here, we see. And so we're happy to see that you're willing to work with people, but we also feel like we're the ones, all of us, that tell them. They don't tell us what their signage is, they don't tell us what their, we have to work with our bylaws, I know, but we can also say, how many lumens? How bright will it be? That plastic that they're talking about is excruciating to look at at night. I almost think it might be worse than ever bright, but we need to have a site, we need to be looking at it, show us another location. Let us, please, be a good planning board for us, please be good stewards for us. Go and look at where you have that kind of a plastic acrylic light that has something that is actually nineteen feet high. It's eighteen actually. The lights are going up, it's going down and shining, you still got nineteen feet there. We're still seeing light that high and those lights are above. So when I look at those plans, it's, it's still, still pretty high. I, I think we really need to look at it, what is it going to look like? Not after the fact, how bright is it going to be? I've gone through Dollar General, Dollar General, Dollar General store in Chippewa, we're removing from, we had terrible problems. I'm telling you, the noise in the back, the trash, the rats, it's awful for us, it was awful. I know, I'm just saying.
In offense, we're just here to talk about the sign.
I know, but I'm just saying, we need to be good stewards. And all I'm saying is after the fact, we can't do it. So if you could just please take a look at the lights and what they will look like and how bright they'll be. Every Dollar General store we've driven by after closing is, got people stocking the shelves and stuffing the parking lot all night long. When do they close? When will the parking lot lights go off? What's the promise here for us?
So well, those things that were set forth in the previous meetings as part of their, as part of their site plan approval, that was already discussed. Again, this is more.
Can I ask what those are, just so we know?
I don't know them offhand. We'd have to go back and check exactly what was, what was part of it, so.
So it's a parking lot is different than the signage in terms of how long it can stay?
Well, we haven't done anything with the signage yet. This is, this is why we're here tonight, so.
We're talking about lights though, right?
But, but the sign, the signage is a separate from the actual site plan approval. And that's why we're here tonight.
But nobody remembers what the policy is for parking lot.
I think someone just referenced, it's a half an hour after closing.
It is half an hour. So if that's, somebody's stocking at night, it's, they don't have the parking lot, because every Dollar General store I've driven by, at eleven to twelve o'clock, the lights are still on. One to two o'clock in the morning, the lights are still on. And it's like this, all through the store and the signs are, in the parking lot are all on. So that's why I'm asking, I'm looking.
It's, it's a moot question right now, because it's already been approved and, and, we're done with that piece.
But we will.
We're looking specifically at the signage tonight.
Right, but the signage will affect the rest of the lumens that we all experience. So if the, if the target, if the parking lot lights are left on longer and then.
We just, we just talked about that.
It's only half an hour.
It's a half an hour. If you reference that correctly, we'll, we'll check it out before we make a decision.
That was from Chad, the, that Chad said.
Is it possible?
We have to go back and look at the conditions we set on the site plan approval.
Is it possible for you to get a, a look to see actually what this looks like? Is there someplace else that we could look at that kind of a sign? Do you know that you constructed?
Westfield.
Westfield has this kind of a sign?
They have the gooseneck over the, over the doorway and they have the same pole sign.
And the same pole, with the, with the lights over it?
No.
No, that's a, that's a.
That's illuminated, no.
So we could at least see.
And it's bigger this way, it's like the original plans were, but it's on a shorter pole, so it's not weird.
Right, yeah. Is, is it necessary to have some of those? As we wrote, we put this on Facebook and we had folks who grew up in Granby with us far away in California, who said, you're driving down 202, you will see that sign on the building, so.
Well, I think it's meant to be seen.
Right, but I'm just saying, do we have to have such a tall sign at the?
Well, I think, I think given the setback requirement in the site, in the setback of the building, that they provide.
that they advised that they did not want to go with the monument sign, um, because of the setback requirement. So you have to be twenty foot back from the property line, not the street line. And you have a monument sign that's only about three or four foot high. The visibility of that is restricted. Plus you have a snowstorm, plus you have something, I mean, it gets covered with snow. So I think based on the setback, the road...
Those are much bigger than sixteen inches.
The setback of the building, that that was the appropriate, that was the appropriate size.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's still too high. I think we're not...
Let's keep the discussion to the board chair, not to one another.
Yeah, thanks. I just wondered, it has to be that tall sign? Are you trying to shine it up to Westo, and I think you're trying to...
It's definitely true.
Shine it up to Ferry Hill? I think people will see it. They will see the front of that store. There's, there's no one who drives on 202 who will not get the front of that building, regardless of how far back it is and where it's at. Does it have to be, my question is, that tall sign? And would you please look at how bright it's gonna be? What are the lumens in the light? Those four lights that make it eighteen feet tall, rather than actually fifteen feet? If somebody could just look at that for us, please, and get back to us on it, it'd be really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, can I, one last question? Yeah, does, does anyone in the planning board, if you have a conflict of interest, that they have to sign around this project? Does anyone on the planning board, have they had to sign a conflict of interest form with the state around this project? No, right? Okay, just one more. Thanks.
Yeah, that, that is much larger than sixteen inches.
I think we should share those. We should share them.
Would you like to see?
Um, I went out to Westfield and took pictures of the Dollar General there, so we have, oh, clearly, pictures of that.
So the six lights, of course.
Yeah, the six lights, yeah. That's much, that's a much bigger sign, yeah, much bigger.
But to give you an idea of gooseneck and the pole, but the pole there is shorter, but the sign itself is bigger. You don't believe it's...
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Leonard Yakir. I did, recently, I bought the property at thirty-two Ferry Hill Road. It's beautiful town of Bramby. I know we're, uh, we're trying to address the signage, I'll try to be specific about it. My wife said I'm a filmmaker, I'm the lighting director. I've done a lot of work with lighting. And I know if I want to increase lighting, what I'll do, I'll put a highly reflective surface, reflecting light onto it. And in one sense, by doing this, you may be increasing the brightness and the lumens of the sign, uh, with the, with the intention of, um, of supposedly commission to brightness. The other thing is, if you look, if you, I hope I'm making sense.
Sorry.
The other thing is that, if you look at a sign, you have a sign which has a surface, and then you have a light that shines on it. That's all one piece. It's a sign. That distance constitutes the sign, whether you put it inside like a self-illuminating thing has, you, you put it inside, here you put it on the outside. When we light objects, we, we create a test, and we reflect, but the whole area is the light. In other words, I think that that light and design like that is far beyond the specs that you've been talking about. It should include the whole arc of that, uh, spotlight coming on it, and the whole surface, the whole area becomes a surface that's, that's lit, just becomes a massive square, becomes a massive box. Now, we're gonna be looking right at that box. Right now, to, to do this construction, I think, I don't know if there's a construction out to be right beside it, I think they have something to do with it, but they cleared out all the woods. And those, their little security doorlets, which could not be seen before the construction, uh, started, are glaring in our window all night long now. Those are just single bulbs. We're talking about, uh, a, a, a system that is designed to increase light with floodlights coming back on a highly reflective surface. It's gonna be extremely bright. Nobody's talking about wattage, nobody's talking about the, the effect of, of how bright this light is. And I'm also hearing about a half hour or one hour after closing. Well, specifically, what is that time? They could decide to close it before the morning. That's already been, it's already, we don't have the conditions in front of us.
Can, can I read? I actually found it.
You can pull them up.
Yeah. So, this was, um, recorded on July sixteenth. Um, you guys closed the public hearing on June twenty-fourth, and regarding, um, lighting. Site lighting is proposed via cutoff pole-mounted luminaries and wall-packed luminaires. Tye and Bond reviewed the photometric plan and concurred that there would be no light spillover onto adjacent property. Lighting is proposed to remain on one half hour after closing. One wall-packed luminaire on each side of the building is proposed to remain on overnight as security lighting. And you have conditioned the approval on, um, the approved hours, uh, proposed hours from eight AM to ten PM.
So it's, it's, so I understand it's approved that it closes at ten, at that time?
Yes.
But there's something, what's that?
So I'm gonna sit in my living room with a light glaring at me till eleven o'clock at night. Well, I think you really ought to consider the reality that putting these type of gooseneck lights shining on a highly reflective surface is brighter than what they originally proposed. And it's a way of getting it around that, you know, the objections to the original proposal. It's extremely bright. And if you don't consider the amount of wattage and the effect of that, I think you'll be, uh, fairly, you know, you're duty of looking at the whole issue.
We did, we did discuss, sort of, I, as I mentioned, I asked at the beginning if they knew what the wattage, uh, that would be too. But there's some, two of the board needs to look at, that's in our purview. To say that only, we can't, can we maximize the number of wattage that they can have in that light? I mean, that may be outside our scope of purview, I'll have to do that.
You do have anything in the bylaws for wattage? Or could you start talking about luminaires?
Right.
Or lumens, I should say. You don't have anything in the bylaws regarding that?
Could it be painted sign?
It's overpainted versus a highly reflective surface, it makes a massive difference.
Then, when the West was having a dilapidated sign after five years of weather?
Well, it will be business, they can fix it up, as we all, we hope they will.
And you guys are gonna, no, Ben, you're gonna drive by and, uh, we're gonna stare at it?
All night long.
As long as we live here.
Not all night long.
Yeah, I'll have gone to bed maybe, if it doesn't shine in my bedroom window, and keep me up all night.
No, please consider, maybe this sign will be shorter? Shorter than fifteen? I know fifteen feet is the pole, and then it goes higher than the gooseneck.
Well, I, I hope they will consider the, the dire concern we have, living in this city, with, with, with the idea of these bright, of these very bright lights. They're designed to be bright. And it's actually designed to be brighter than the material that it is.
Yes, sir.
Dennis Lefleur, three seventy-two East Day Street and one seventy-two West Day Street. Now, I have a question for the board, uh, related to lighting. Does anybody ever complain in town about Christmas lights in their neighbor's yard?
Not that I know of.
That's just for Christmas, darling.
Eh? They're up now, and it's October in the winter?
We do.
I'm just curious, is it a similar situation? Flashing lights and...
Mrs. Coles, do you know how, how tall that sign was, and what's...
Um, I, I, I know it's not very tall, it really looks very...
Did you know you keep it in there?
No, I do not, but I would guess eight, probably.
Yeah, and it's also right on the roadway too. What this one is set back, again, twenty-one, plus feet.
And actually, the size of this one now, the reniz one, would go better with that eight-foot pole.
That's, that's not on the street, that's in, that's in the least...
Well, not in the area, but, forty-five feet.
We'll take a look.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we're not here to argue about the Westwood.
That's just giving you an idea of what the gooseneck light would look like in what the sign.
That's, that's not bad.
Five times, sorry, several times decided on the different person here.
Shut the original size.
Yeah, that's almost quite decided that one there, so.
It's for hand-means.
Yeah, that's fair.
Can I ask why Carol Menzrow, very helpful, why it has to be twenty-one feet back? Because the, the brain, um, I'm sorry, the veterinary clinic, and those storage things, they both have really nice lighted signs, and even in the winter, when it snows, the lights are there around. If it snows, it's a barrier, but that's not twenty-one feet back. Is it different for every business?
The bylaws changed. Yes.
The bylaws changed?
Yes.
Since they built this building?
Those are better on for a while.
Well, there hasn't been any business since then in a while.
The sign bylaws changed in fourteen, right? Sixteen?
Fourteen. I think it's fourteen. Four bylaws on the board yet. Pardon me?
Twenty-fourteen. You're right.
It wasn't on the board yet, and they just, they changed those. So, that's, that's the reason.
So now that we've part our concerns, is there anything you as the board can do to kind of meet in the middle compromise somewhere? We don't want to say anything.
Do you have something else to add?
Uh, Susan Knight, a very terrific number. Um, that's what I was gonna ask too, actually, Carol, I was the same thing. I just wonder if there's some way we can scale it down even more, so that it's not eighteen feet tall, and that it's not a highly reflective surface, that it's just like every other sign town. Some of the, some of the internal signs are very low wattage. Like, you can drive by and see them, they're, they're cubicle signs, and daycare centers lit all the time, and sure. But the ones that are, have signs like this, and they're painted, are beautiful, and everyone sees them. I, I don't think there's any way people are gonna miss it if they're driving. Everyone I've talked to comes from Beltratown, to Springfield, to Holyoke, to, comes down 202, and believe me, we've talked to a lot of people, nobody has missed this construction. They're all surprised, and they, I, I don't think they're gonna miss it, so I'm saying, I think they'll be happy to see that if they've got a cubicle sign, people will walk through the door and say, "This is quaint and lovely, and we're happy you're here." Versus big...
But there also might, and I, and I don't know if that's factual, but there also might be requirements from the, the corporations that dictates you have to have certain signs, to use certain things, like Dunkin' Donuts and Verizon, and things like that. Some of these, some of these corporations, if you own a store or storefront, they have certain requirements that you need to follow.
But they own the store, they, excuse me, uh, Mr. Sexton?
Yes.
They, they may have those, but those do not perceive our bylaws or our regulations or what we decide here. They don't perceive us. We supersede whatever they are. If this is a franchise, they may have other people to buy it, because, is this a franchise? Do you know, or is it...
I, I don't know, I don't know if it's...
It is natural, it doesn't matter, they're, they will look...
It's corporate, sure.
Is it franchise?
It's a corporate.
It's corporate, so corporate will try to keep the store open. If we say, "We're sorry, it can't be highly reflective, it has to be painted..."
But we need to act within, within our bylaws too. That's, that's our, our job as well.
Is there anything you can do? Is there anything to follow?
Again, we, we, we need to act within our bylaws, uh, and things that are outside our purview that we can't control, there's just certain things we can't control. But we can also make recommendations, and it's up to them if they wish to, uh, certain things like that. You know, we'll look at, as Bob spoke about, we could look at wattage and things like that, and, uh, you know, for us just to throw out numbers of wattage and stuff like that. I, I'm speaking for myself, I don't know, you know, what the difference between a hundred and fifty watt light bulb and a, and a two hundred watt, you know, what's gonna make the difference of that, so, or if that's feasible for them as well, so. But I know you do, you do wanna speak a little bit, though.
I, I just wanted to comment on a few things that were said, just to reiterate.
Absolutely.
Um, so just in general, to reiterate, the signs are within the bylaw, they do meet the code. Um, and I believe that the only reason we're here before the board is to have permission, have a special permit to, for the freestanding sign, but in general, but the signs meet the bylaw. Uh, I just wanted to point out that with the definition of an area of a sign, it does not specifically state that we need to include the external illumination component or device in measuring the sign and the size, the size of the sign.
Just the structure, yeah.
Just the sign itself. And, um, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on, but, is it, is she in?
Yes.
Um, I do see that there is a clause in here, um, that specifically states for externally illuminated signs, uh, there was some, there was a chart. So, they would, Dollar General would need to provide information, if they're gonna use an incandescent or quartz or fluorescent, they'll have to buy by this, by this, um, chart, and they'll have to state on their drawings when they apply for a building permit for the sign, with the structures, the gooseneck structures, they'll have to get to that. That's, we should have known before, you know? Yes, I can, I can supply that, I don't know, like I said, they didn't give me the type of bulb they're using with the wattage.
But either way, it's in, it's in the bylaws, so they have to...
So they have to buy, they have to buy.
They can't go outside, because it would be, get to the front. Yes, sir.
Look, it seems to me that if, uh, if, if, if you're saying that it's within the bylaws in terms of the size of the sign, and it has nothing to do with the lights that are attached to the sign, it would seem to me that you should get a permit for that, for these things that are attached to the sign, because they also are lights, and they are signage also. So we're not, we're talking about two different, you're, you're saying it's two different objects? So if it is two different objects, you need a permit for both?
But if our bylaws don't indicate that, then we can't just, we can't just say that they have to do it?
I just, I think you do. I make a recommendation that you look at both, both things, both the sign and the thing that's illuminating the sign.
We're gonna look at the whole entire thing, everything that's been presented to us, as well as the input from everybody else we're gonna take a look at.
So just a general question, uh, they have the, uh, there's, there's no issue with them putting up lights throughout the whole thing, for, at any brightness?
You're talking about the parking lot, or...
Yeah, we're talking, we're talking about the parking lot. Are there any issues with that, in terms of our bylaws?
With the park, well, the parking lot's done. If we're talking about the building, they're allowed, if they wanna illuminate the outside of their building, I mean, look, we, they, we can look at that, but that's what they're, they're allowed to have that done, as part of their, their building. If they wanna have lighting outside their building for safety concerns or what, what have you, they're allowed to have, they could do that.
Yeah, I guess the point I'm trying to make is simply, I thought, that, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Heather.
Heather, Heather was saying that, you know, the, the sign itself is within the bylaws, and the light, the light thing that's illuminating the sign has nothing to do with it.
Well, it's a...
For me, it's attached to the sign, it's part of the sign.
I'm sorry, to the, to the board, I think what we would do is, we would apply, we apply to the sign size itself. That's the sign. But we would also include the lighting in the building permit application, to make sure that the lighting appears, the external illumination appears to the chart. But in calculating the size of the sign, I feel that we don't have to include the external fixtures. But we would include that in the permit, and even the building inspector would need to review that it matches and that it appears to the chart.
Yeah, I, I think it would, and also in terms of the size, because if the thing loops up above, it increases the height of the sign, because the light is high.
Does it also do that, when you have ground lighting reflecting up on the sign?
I don't know. I'm talking about this.
That's why, that's why it's not addressed. It's not part of the sign.
At the risk of...
And it was, pardon me?
It is attached to, it's part of the sign, it's attached to it.
It seems... You know, Puma Azarelle, at the, at the risk of beating a dead horse, because it sounds like we are really beating a dead horse, um, I think that the concern of the borders is, uh, primary to the, the lumens. And I think that's what we're really looking at. I mean, the sign, you know, it come down to the specs, to the code, that's fine, okay? Um, but how it's lit is primary to what we are discussing. And that's, you know, I think that's what you guys are trying to tell us, is that, you know, and that's, and that's huge, in terms of, you know, whether or not it's a gooseneck light... huge in terms of, you know, whether or not it's the gooseneck lighting, whether or not it's, you know, I, you know, I don't know all the stuff about it, all I know is that, you know, the softer the, the light, that, you know, the better it is for us. And I think it's still, you know, I mean, Dollar General has great yellow. It's, I mean, I've lived on this one, you know, and I've driven by a bunch of them, you know, we have one, my, my business that I just sold, just one right on the top of.
So their advertising is working?
Okay.
Lights call. Yeah, that's, you know, it's, so.
It doesn't mean you go in the door, you might see it, trust me.
No, I think, some people, people shop wherever they want to shop, that's, that's, that's more than light.
It's a problem, complaining where to look at.
Yeah, no, and I.
How bright are the lights where you're going to have a business, you know?
And as I said earlier, that's, you know, something playing boards, we listen to what the concerns are from the residents, we also look at our bylaws, what's allowed, what's not allowed, and as was spoken already, that it does meet the requirements of the bylaws, it falls within those guidelines. There's actually, as, as Bob referenced too, there is a actual chart, what's allowed for wattage and things like that, so those are things that are always set within the bylaws and that's how we govern what we do and how we guide us, the planning board are guided by, by the bylaws and that's what we act on.
Pardon me, you can make recommendations though?
We can make recommendations and what we feel that it needs to be a reasonable recommendation and, and the answer to that's all said and done, they don't, they could say, well, you know, we meet your bylaws, why, why should we have to do that? I think without that, we're broke.
But, pardon me, I, excuse me, I'm concerned that why is this meeting happening if all of the bylaws were met for signage? It sounded to me like they hadn't been met for signage, so now this change keeps it within.
Right, so originally, and as, as I spoke about earlier, they, they changed the whole entire sign that they're, they're bringing forward from their last meeting and I think a lot of that was based on the conversation that people were having in this room. I, I know for myself from observing what's going on, that she was actually taking notes and she, she brought those, I'm assuming she brought those back.
Yeah.
And, you know, and they, they, they listen to what people are saying, so we talked about good neighbors and, and things, they, I think, you know, just, just my thoughts, my opinions, is that they listened to what was being said and they brought that back, like they kind of came back to us with something different, so.
Oh, excuse me, but it's brighter.
Well, that's, that's, we don't know it was brighter, we, I don't, we don't know it was sort of a bit brighter, but again, the sign is, is much smaller.
Yeah.
That, that I know, the sign is much smaller than I think what they originally were going at, because before, the actual special permit for the old design.
The headlights of, newer cars are usually tiny, what have worries with this?
I think, again, if I may, just, just one more time, just, you know, if you guys really seriously consider the lumens and, you know, and I, you know, Dollar General, they're huge and, you know, I mean, they meet the bylaws, great, but they can also, you know, come down with it in terms of different things, you know, the gooseneck, the gooseneck lighting and such and such, but that's, that's up for you guys to, to determine and I think you've gotten, I'm going to say more than enough input.
Oh wait, no.
Oh, I, I guess not.
I have one last question, I wasn't clear on, but Heather just brought up. So we're here tonight, if I heard correctly, for a special permit for the pole sign, why if it meets the bylaws?
Because it actually needs the size requirements, but in our bylaws, see, if you have a pole sign, you have to have one.
Correct.
You have to have that, because it's not, when I look at the signs, it's, it's, it's less than a twenty four square feet.
Oh no, I saw that, but I thought what you were saying was that it had to be a permit just for a pole sign.
So, because it's a pole sign.
Correct.
So then what has probably over approving whether freestanding sign is allowed outside or not?
Okay. So what?
Well, another gentleman back here is going to have his hand up for that.
Just, just a quick question along similar lines, do the bylaws have any article that addresses metal lining for public safety or anything like that?
More or less the maximum, I would believe.
Right.
And I think your minimum would be at the discretion of the business owner, what they feel is, just a maximum.
Well, may I say something, Carol Mesro, to Heather, to the board, to you, Heather, to the board? What about a beautiful country looking sign that is on two poles with the board just paint a sign with beautiful light shining on it, that, that would make the town really happy and they'd probably be like, like Susan said, say, nice that they met us halfway and we're going to go there and shop. I mean, I don't think whether, I do think it could be tasteful, very well lit and serve the same purpose and keep, you know, keeping a butter is kind of happy, you know, instead of miserable, the rest and wanting to sell and get out of here, I mean, you know, I've been here in that house thirty three years and I was hoping to die in that house, but you know, I got to tell you, I don't want to look at that, I'm sorry, this is how we feel, a strong feeling.
Don't, you don't need to be sorry about how you feel.
Well, is that a consideration that we could ask, say, let them know that the people would like them to consider this kind of sign instead of the pole and all the acrylic and the lights?
I, I can speak for Heather, I'm sure she's here, what, what they wanted and I think that's what they want and I think they, again, this is what they're presenting and if they have a choice, I think they, at, at our meetings before that we had, our public hearings, I know that they listened to a lot of things that were being said and they took into consideration whether they're building it, designing it, the parking lot and things like that, so they did make some, some changes as far as when, when people were stating things and, you know, how far you're going to cut back the trees, whether they're in a certain type of pushes and stuff, I remember a lot that taken place during the meetings and they were listening to what people were saying and they made some, they made some changes based on what people were saying, some of the butters and some of the people that were here talking about what their concerns were, I know they did make some changes, but again, this is, you know, we need to be, you know, fair to both sides as well.
Okay, well, one last thing, the campground, they have a huge sign, that camping place up on, but they're only like four or five feet off the ground, you can't miss their sign and they're back, do you know what I mean, they're not on the street and they've got a much larger sign than you're proposing and it's not extremely bright, but you can't miss it and it's well done. I mean, can that be something you might propose? We take a picture and show them that thing, look, this is still going to be all of whatever you call it, but the business you want, you know.
I, I can't speak for Dollar General.
How does it work now, do you guys go to them and say anything or do we know tonight what you're going to say to them, how does this end?
It depends what the board wants, if the board will look at everything, if the board feels they have enough information, the board can decide whether or not they want to vote tonight or the board can push it off to later date, if they feel they need to gather more information.
Okay.
I, I strongly recommend that you really consider the wattage on these things, the lumens, actually you can have a lot of wattage and not have a bright object.
And that is in our bylaws as well, that, that's, that's noted in our bylaws, what the maximum wattage is allowed to. So that's, we can look at that and, again, we can reference it and, I can't speak as to what the difference in brightness is going to be, you know, to me to say, well, you should have a forty watt light, I don't know the brightness of, well, how that impact their sign and stuff like that, so that's why, you know, years ago when they, they did that, they, they looked at different things and that's how they came up with a maximum as far as the brightness and stuff like that. And again, I think they, they're willing to work with the, the neighbors and things like that, you know, so they can take into consideration, you know, when it's, you know, when it was set and built, they, they seemed too bright, they may be willing to say, you know what, we hear what you're saying, we want to be a good neighbor, we'll do what we can, maybe we can, we can lower that, but until it's up and built, we actually don't know what it's going to look like.
I'm afraid once the horse is out of the farm, they're not going to, can I just ask about all this stuff, please? The, the, how long ago were the bylaws on the ground wattage, because now LEDs have totally different wattage and it's expressed in forty watts, if that's forty LEDs, that's, you know, different, I just wonder how long ago that was, is that up to date?
Two thousand fourteen, there are changes.
Two thousand fourteen?
As far as technology goes, you'd have to change them every couple of years.
Right.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm actually here for a different subject, but listening to all this, did they submit other options for types of signs or was it only a pole sign was their only option?
They had different, what was your name?
Daisy Pendle.
The address?
Pendle, I'm sorry, what was that? Daisy Pendle. And you're at two Carver Street, where have you been?
So as I said earlier, I know they had, they had a different sign and everything that they were going to bring forward and I, again, I believe in what the conversation was taking place after the meeting here, that some of that, that all that information was brought back to them and then based on that, they listened to what kind of people were saying and they, I think they, they probably brought back what they thought would be a reasonable.
I mean, I just think that the sign out for the public safety complex, announces public safety complex, we know where to hide our police, we know where to find our, our fire department if there's an emergency and it's bright enough and it shows where it is, but, you know, it's not on a twenty foot pole, so if that's good enough for our fire department and our first responders, why can't a sign like that be good enough for Dollar General?
Amen.
Again, you'd have to look at, throughout our town though too, we have also a CVS that has a sign, we have a, a subway that has a, a large sign.
That's more of a business district, five orders.
Unfortunately, 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 with how you look at it, two oh two is the business district coming up to where this is, so that's, again, and to change things, but to change things and things like that, those are why we have bylaws and, you know, people are more willing to present different thoughts, different ideas, to change the bylaws and that's what we hope from, you know, when, when it comes to doing these things, that's who, you know, we want the town people to be part of and I can honestly tell you, from sitting in several different meetings, when we had different changes to bylaws, we had a room full of maybe five or ten people out of how many people live in our town. So, you know, we can change things, but people need, be willing to change it, they need to be part of the change, because when you have five or ten people coming out, those five or ten people are speaking for the entire town sometimes, because that's what the board is listening to as well, so.
Well, I know, I suggest that the board talk to whoever you have to talk to to get more average, I never knew anyone, I just finally went on Facebook to put this out because I don't know when your meetings are, I don't read the town reminder, so I bet you out of the six thousand people, maybe a hundred read the town reminder, I don't know.
It's not posted on your website, I looked for ages to each bylaws, to get any piece of that.
Bylaws are posted on the website.
Now, I've kind of had to.
But they're there.
Yeah.
And that's pretty exciting, I'm just saying, people don't know when you're.
Yeah, I know, I understand that. It was a.
I live, my name's Becky, I live in a one nine seven West State Street, so I'm not a butter, but I'm in, I, I appreciate the stuff that has taken for the revision to come to this point, because my concern is there going to be a big block backlit sign that was going to be, like everybody else is running around, so I appreciate the fact that it, the initial sign was rejected or whatever the process was and now they can come back with this, with amended plans with the umbrella lights or whatever they're called and, you know, individual letters and sort of the box on the storefront, so I just want to say thank you for that. It's better than living across the street from the abandoned police station that's gone into crap.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask at this point if there's any comments, further comments from the audience that is, that we haven't already discussed already, so we can move the meeting along. So does anybody have anything they want to bring up that is new and additional information or comments or concerns at this time? No, okay. Recommendation.
There's a public parking lot meeting? Well, no, I don't think we want to do that yet. I would ask, I guess I would ask the applicant if there was any other concessions that you feel you would like to take back to ownership.
That I would like to?
Take back to the ownership.
No, I'd like to move forward with what they presented and just reiterate that they do, they do feel there is a specific need for a ground sign at that location based on the way that the building was set back, the way that the building is situated and the wall sign being perpendicular to the street, not parallel to the street, so there is a need to have a ground sign at that particular location.
A ground sign or?
The pole sign.
The pole sign.
Freestanding sign, freestanding sign.
So, I'm sorry. So if you, if you have, if you move the wording, the sign over the doorway, you put it on the side of the building, the under building that faces the street, following the logic you were just talking about, do you necessarily need that?
I would still, I would still say they would need that because it's just the angle of the building, I mean, it's just for visibility for travelers themselves. And the entrance, you know, the wall sign really is appropriate over your entrance location, at your entrance doors, that's the appropriate place, or you have one wall sign, the appropriate place ninety nine point nine percent of the times over your entrance doors and that's where this is proposed.
So you're going to have to go back and ask for concessions?
I would have.
I think we should ask regarding illumination wattage, with documentation provided by corporate.
Yeah.
Lights that are being discussed here.
Yeah. You need more light specifics on that, on this.
Please.
What is the maximum, what do you mean?
What's it?
Well, it depends what kind of a light they're using.
Right.
One, two, three, four, five, six, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
So that's the freestanding sign.
It'll be the goosenecks, gooseneck fixtures themselves, that's the lighting, the signs themselves do not light, it's the gooseneck fixtures of each sign that they only to provide specifics on, what type of lighting, what type of bulb. And we have to adhere to.
Right, that's a year of the bylaws.
You'll have to adhere to that chart.
Sixty five point five seven.
Type.
I think you have to the building inspector to make sure you're, you're compliant. Right, but at least something's been provided to us for the purpose of the, only for the pole sign.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's a.
Interstitial warrior, especially.
The other one has no.
What do you, what was that?
It's a pole sign, I don't think we're really, we can look at, because the other one.
It's the same, the goosenecks are the same, they're open.
Right, but the point being, the other one isn't under special permit.
Right.
It's a law, it makes the bylaws, the special permit is only on the pole sign. Our hands are tied just to that specific.
So.
The, the building inspector will make sure that you adhere to, to the, to the wall sign.
This can happen.
I think based on the revision to the initial plan, as I mentioned, they are meeting all of the components of the signed bylaw. The special permit is required for a freestanding sign, which is why they're here, but I think the board has come to the conclusion that, you know, they're, they're, that they're meeting all of those bylaws, that, that they're meeting the bylaw and, you know, that, that, they're, you know, to, to consider the comments and consider the application to issue a special permit for the standing sign.
So with that being said, I make a motion to close the public input of this, of this hearing.
So what are you discussing?
One second.
Are we going to relate until we have all information?
What information?
Regarding illumination.
Illumination, so aside.
But I, I guess we're wrong with that, is that that's already set by the bylaw.
What is?
What the illumination can be.
But we don't know.
But they need to meet, they need to meet it.
Would be nice to know that before we prove it.
But, well.
I hate to say it, but I agree. No.
But they, but they could turn around and say, yeah, we're gonna put five in there. And then they put five and say, well, you know what, five doesn't work. Uh, we're gonna go a little bit higher and your, your bylaw allows us to do that.
But it should say on the plan, before they even do it, exactly what it's going to be.
But, but again, I go back to saying that, and Ken, John here if you would, they could say, we're gonna go with five quarts. So that's gonna be that. And they decide, well, you know, five is not enough, so we're gonna go a little bit higher. And your bylaws allow, allow us to go up to seven point one.
But our special permit would only allow a certain number, not any change.
This should be reviewed by an electrician or somebody who knows about, you know, the way they get their opinion on three minutes.
I'm just looking at your bylaws, or, or, a lot, what's allowed, what's not allowed. And then we need to have a real good reason to be lower than what it is on the street. What's, what's our reason for?
A good, a good reason, are we not good reasons? We are good reasons. We are good reasons.
When it comes down to it, you're not the one that's challenged, the board is the one that's challenged, so.
So what are we doing here? We have a motion, kind of halfway down here.
Well, I made a motion, but now there's discussion on it, so let's, let's talk it through.
I'd like to see the specs therefore.
Before we close the public hearing portion, that's, that's.
My thought is to continue the public hearing until we receive the stats. Then we can, can, I'll continue and then move forward from there.
So I guess my question is, is they come back and say, we're gonna, we wanna use quarts and seven point one, what your bylaws, bylaws to do? I don't know how right that is.
It needs the bylaw.
It needs the bylaw. So what would I have to say?
It would not necessarily appease the audience, but the audience would know that, you know what I felt within the bylaws? The bylaws were set forth by the, uh, by town meeting, um, March whatever it was, two thousand fourteen. Here we are.
But they have to follow them in the bylaws, that's.
But at least we've got it. At least we've got it.
Okay, no, I hear you saying, I'm just, we just stated that it has to follow within that, the bylaws.
No, but we should have an exact number in the prints that we have and, um,
And for what, I don't know, but I think Heather was very willing to do this.
I think they're perfectly willing to do that. My own concern would be to come back another month. If there's a way to condition somehow to, to get the information to you to make sure you have it on record, but not to continue it for a whole month somehow. Because now it's three months.
I wouldn't condition this because if I have any more questions, I wouldn't be able to answer.
Because I know I'm cer-, I'm certainly positive that, but I haven't mentioned this.
Special permit, we need super majority?
Correct.
So we need all four of us?
That's correct.
Or district.
Like I said, my, my, my concern is that laws are following within the.
Well, in this house, I think right now, if you vote, if the board were to close public input, go to discussion among ourselves, and go to the vote, it doesn't sound like there'd be anything. It wouldn't be, it would be that.
Am I allowed to say one more thing?
We've already closed the input from the public at this time.
Well, I made a motion.
I stand corrected, you may.
A one hundred watt clear light bulb gives off a totally different light than a one hundred watt frosted bulb, but yet they're both hundred watt bulbs. So if the bylaw says you can have a certain wattage or lumin, it doesn't specify. They could take that wattage and add it on a particular bulb that lights up to dressers. So I think that you need to have a professional look at the type of lighting before you make a decision.
Can I make a suggestion? You can do a test on the field, one letter, one light, at the same passcode.
Well, it's not the wall sign, it's just a ground sign.
So maybe you have a chart, don't you have a little one?
Right, there's a low and a high.
Am I reading that right?
Yeah. And that's what a square footage, so. Total, yeah, total loss per square foot, the low and a high. Well, I, the only thing I can say right now, based, based on the, uh, the conversations taking place with the board here, I, I mean, I would, I, I would not, um, close it because I, you know, I, well, if, would, some of the board members are looking for additional information. I definitely wanna respect that and, uh, but I also would ask that the, the board members who are asking for additional information, they know exactly what they want from information, so that can be provided to the applicant, so the applicant can obtain that information and bring it back to us and have what this board is looking for. So it doesn't continue to be an ongoing thing, you know. Yes?
The permit should be conditional on an engineer providing luminous, um, based on what type of lamp they're using meets the area of either the low illumination or the high illumination.
We should have that before, remember?
No, it'd be conditional on the permit. So in other words, we approve this, the building department cannot issue the permit until, until the, the lumens are, by an engineer, not an electrician, but, uh, an engineer that can provide the, the illumination, based on what lamp type they're using. All we need to know is that that meets code. If, if the engineer, if the engineered, uh, uh, specifications don't meet any one of, any of these, then they don't get the permit. We do that all the time, we make things conditional. They have to provide that to the building inspector to make sure that the lamps that they're using meet the illumination based on the specifications for the square footage here. Even if they provide it to us today, before we made the condition, before we made, uh, before we approved it, the, the building inspector still has to have that.
Well, that's fine, but if we have the information beforehand, we know what we're approving.
What we're, what we're approving is.
Something under the table, but we don't know what.
We don't know, we, we don't know yet because we don't know what, what type of lamp they're using. And tomorrow they could change the lamp, what's that?
They could fill it in.
I'm just trying to expedite this for the, for the, for them. We're not gonna tell them, no, you can't use that, you gotta use this. As long as their spec, specifications, the engineer, meets our bylaw.
Right, but I still wanna know what we.
Right, we've been through this before, I'm not gonna sit here and argue with you. It's, it's one or the other. What, whatever we approve tonight. It would, it would still have to go to the, the building inspector to make sure it meets this.
And he just needs whatever we put in the special permit.
Why don't we just continue it for two weeks, to December ninth? Or next making?
If, if.
Two weeks.
The board member wants this made, then we're.
I'll make a motion, we'll continue, um, the public hearing until Monday, December ninth. Do you say five forty twenty?
Well, let's make it five fifteen.
Five fifteen?
That's the only thing I've ever jotted at night.
What's that?
That'd be the only thing, that'd be, no other public hearing that night, so.
I'm sorry, what's the time?
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen?
Yes.
So for the record, let's be specific what we're asking her to bring back, so there's no confusion to kick in the south another, another two.
What I need you asking me to bring back is a lighting specification. I don't even stand for the meeting, no, it stands for the permit, right? But a lighting specification on the, on the specifics of the bulbs and the wattage and that adheres to the code. And then at the time of the, submit it for the building permit, we can have that.
That'll do, I'm just waiting. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Uh, so if we have a motion to.
I'll second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. What else on our agenda? Is it Grandy Preservation? I, I apologize, I do have to leave. Will you?
Six thirty already. Okay, next on the agenda, Grandy Preservation Commission, Gail.
So we have this, some information about our question for a special permitting.
Folks, folks, folks?
No, don't tie it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So we want you to kind of submit, now that we've got through this process, what you guys are gonna, what? And we'll ask them to do some of the fees and other areas. So far, I'm happy with this. With some of my records. The show's in parking. In the building.
Thank you.
So, my first question. If we have, like I said, uh, common access. And she's gonna be able to, uh, two hand gestures. And if you want to do three, you have, uh, pretty much spaces. One of my questions is, in our request for a, to, um, special permit, we want to, we'll be allowed to have, uh, more use of the building upstairs. Create a capacity. So, the question is, do you need to show? Do we need to show you and more additional permits?
We don't know, we don't know what the use is. We're gonna need to know what the occupancy is, what the, what the use group is, if it's allowed in that zone. And then, and if it's allowed, that's fine, just then, then after that, it falls under the building inspector, building code. So in other words, you tell us what the use is, what the, it's, obviously, I'm, I'm guessing it's gonna be a multi-use facility. We're gonna, you're gonna need to prove to us what the occupancy is going to be.
Well, for example?
On the, yeah, we got, we, we need to know the, the maximum occupancy, which will be determined based on an engineer or whatever, whatever use you're using it for. And then we can determine on the site plan, the handicap, parking, uh, accessibility, you know, that, on the exterior, because then, then it goes just to us, just basically site plan approval. If it meets the zoning.
Right.
And it, and then we, then in order for us to be able to tell whether you have enough parking, handicap or otherwise, and accessibility, we would need to know what the, what the use is and what the occupancy would be. After that, our, our purview, based on this being an existing structure, uh, and site plan, would be kinda limited to.
Probably we need a site plan more detailed than this, with measurements on it.
Yes.
Yeah, you need the boundaries, I mean, the, how many footage in front of, we understand that that doesn't have that. We understand we're supposed to do that.
Now, is something a registered, did for us?
Yeah, we probably, again, depending on what you're doing with the building.
Are we gonna be giving these to stormwater management?
Not, I would say no, if they're not changing the impervious area, they're, they're not changing anything.
You mean not changing the parking lot at all?
They're not changing any of the, the parking lot, the impervious area. They're not changing any of that, and they're working within that, within, within your property lines. I don't.
The unfortunate thing is, is you have these stormwater phases that I feel very liberal about, but I heard David DeRosa talk about them. And matter of fact, David DeRosa told me, he's gonna be approaching the planning board for new bylaws set up by us for the stormwater management.
For, for new, for new structures, I would, I would, I think this is existing.
I don't know that, but I'm pretty sure. Ken, are you privy to any of that?
So, um, yeah, if, if, that's your DPW director?
That is correct.
Um, there are some new rules that will be taking, in place next July, um, that is specific to stormwater. Um, depending on your stormwater bylaw, if that's, I don't know if you have one. If you, it might be in the general bylaw. But normally, that's any new development, um. Depending on how the bylaw is drafted, usually an authority would review, um, any new intensity of a building. So if this parking lot were to be touched at all, like repaving or, um, you know, it would, the determination would need to be by DPW, um, usually, that's the case, I'm not sure.
Typically, typically, these things are, and, and they may be putting some new restraints around the, the stormwater, but typically, if you don't disturb more than ten percent, you're okay. You know, it, it may be a different percentage, I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know that for a fact.
Well, but I think it's fair to GPS, may not wanna hear it, but it's fair that they should know that this, there, something may exist.
Would we need the grandfather in as far as stormwater?
I don't know enough about it.
There's some new stuff coming out that we haven't seen yet and we couldn't.
The, the DPW director would probably have a better idea. If there is a town bylaw in place, um, you know, any sort of development would, you know, fall under that purview, if, if it addresses that in the stormwater bylaw.
So what you'd probably wanna do is submit a preliminary set of plans, do it under that process maybe. Then we could send those plans out to the department heads for, for a, a cursory, uh, a review of them, ahead of time.
So where do you want?
So, do you want us to show where the drainage is going to be?
That's up to...
We do have a...
We currently have drainage down there.
That's up to the engineering order as to what has to be submitted and such.
The Catholic Church currently uses parking spaces, we share some of the spots. So does that mean that the Catholic Church will also have to apply this new rule?
It's not a, it's not a change of use.
Right.
It's not a change of use, they're...
We're not really, we're not really planning to change the use, but, uh, between Karen and you.
Well...
There you were saying it, but rather than the town.
Yeah, well, there's, there's, there's a different description of change of use. The change of use is, they have, they've stayed consistent using it as, at, at the purpose that they're using it at. This is a change of use because it was a municipal building, then it went dormant, and now it's being used for... Under a new ownership for something different, so there is a change of use. And whether or not that would constitute you upgrading any of that, we don't know that. I would, I would think not, but based on some new DPW, some new, some new stormwater management, it would be under our purview, outside of our purview, other than having to follow it.
But, but they were, um, applying on that when you looked at the preliminary plans.
Correct.
Right.
And you might get some feedback from them now, too, on, on a, on a side meeting, what his, his opinion would be.
Right. But then, so you're gonna run into the cost of two sets plans, right, preliminary and then final?
Well, the, that's just a phase you would go into, you wouldn't wanna do a final until you went through the preliminary to see what, rather than have to go back and re-engineer everything.
Okay, so I'm...
So work your way towards the final.
Play the side division, do a preliminary and then a final.
So any changes that were needed to be done, get done in the final plan?
So it's, it's a work in progress that we're helping them reach their ultimate.
Well, we need to go, uh, get some termination from, uh, conservation, so we, we don't have any of those.
Okay, we can, uh, have to go to them anyway. Don't go to the police, fire, highway, conservation, not this area.
And I think our question was, what do we need to supply to satisfy the conservation? I mean...
That's something you'd have to talk to them about, Gail.
Does it, uh, a topographical map?
You'd have to ask, you'd have to ask them what they, what they look for.
So we need to go each department and ask them, uh, where do you park?
This, this is kinda...
I mean, your, your, your regulations seem to talk to, uh, new construction, but we are existing construction. So, that's where we're getting a little confused.
Well, there's some gray areas.
Our use.
I said that's where the gray areas come in, it may be, it may be pre-existing, but it's, it's, it's still, it may or may not be conforming. We don't know what the use is.
And that, I mean, I'm only reading through the, the bylaws, it also talked about you have the power to waive certain things. Can you waive some of these things?
We have no idea what we're reviewing until something's put on the, on the plate in front of us.
Do we in general have a, have the ability to waive certain things? Yes.
And, and, uh, your bylaws also spoke to, um... I mean, Bob, you mentioned we had to have an engineer, but it also says you could have an architectural architect and a, and a landscape architect. I mean, they didn't say you must have these, they said that you could use any of those.
You are, you are indeed correct, it did say an engineer. But that's, that was in reference to the stormwater management. A landscape architect, northern architect, is gonna do stormwater management calculations.
So, I mean, in the original, you talked about an engineer. So, whatever stamped on our, our site plan can come from any one of those three bodies?
No.
No?
An, an architect is gonna give you the, the building information. Typically, typically, the engineer would fall under the architect. He would hire an architect to do, to do what he knows needs, that is required for the permitting process for whatever specific use you plan on using this building for. So...
I, I mean, Joe, the bylaws are there, that's why we're confused, they just read, but it said, that's not just...
Yes, it said registered, uh, always good question, uh, professional option. But all plans shall be repaired by the law of course.
So you, you know...
We're asking this because we have a park which is...
Yeah, we have an architect who, you know, I mean, why, or we don't need this, or we need a job to, uh, professional engineer for these plans? Did they have limited funds?
And it's true, our architect will probably have an engineer, but...
Again, the, the question is too open-ended, especially with the, the potential of some issues with stormwater due to the new rules and regulations that are coming out, I believe by the federal government.
Yes.
But, so, but if this is passed prior to those laws coming out, wouldn't we be held to the old laws?
That's not for us being, so that's for something, for you to research to, for you to research to find out. We can't answer that.
Oh, I, I thought you could because you're the, you are the planning board, and so you would know what, what we as citizens have to, have to follow, no?
And again, that goes back to what you say in the bylaws, architect, landscape architect, or registered professional engineer.
So I read that, I mean, we could use any one of those three.
For specific uses. So the, so, an engineer... An engineer, we're talking about a civil engineer that would, that would address stormwater management. An architect is going to address building access, building use.
I'm still a little confused, I'm sorry. So when you get a site plan, and someone signs off on it, whether it be an engineer, an architect, or a, uh, landscape, I mean, we don't have to have three signatures from different bodies, right? Of doing it.
Under the current rules, under current law.
Typically, when we receive a site plan, the site plan is submitted or sent to police, fire, uh, conservation.
Yes, I understand.
Also, depending on the project, we may also see at the applicant's expense, peer review to make sure that your engineer did everything properly.
So initially, you only have the one individual, hopefully you have the, the knowledge to pull in all those issues that we're talking about drainage.
Yeah, like a project.
When are those regulations going into effect again? You have the date of that?
It's July first.
July first, so we have up until July first before the regulation was in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
See, no, I mean, I, I work with DEP for gasoline stations, so up to January first of two thousand and fifteen, if we did a rehab, we could install a slip-on spill bucket. But once January first came, we couldn't do it. So, the way I'm reading the regulation is that rehab up until January first to, to not have...
That is not for us to determine.
Yeah, we're, I'm sure if the, we have to look and see if the town has a stormwater bylaw, because there would be some sort of authority making that determination, not necessarily the planning board. The planning board would be measuring whatever the applicant would bring to it if it needed to act on a site plan or a special permit. And there are components of that site plan and special permit that the planning board can ask if it's not already dictated in the site plan, requirements of which can include a stormwater report, as well as many other different types of report. And they can also ask for a peer review of that application, so...
And it says in our bylaws, all the things that need to be shown on the map.
Yes, I'm looking, I mean, um...
Required site plan contents, it lists eight items that have to be in there.
Yeah, can, can you just refresh my memory, I did have your bylaws here, though. Just refresh my memory.
It's on page ninety-six right now. Says required site plan contents. All site plans shall be prepared by a registered architect, landscape architect, world professional engineer.
Right, so that was our first question, just gave off three, so...
Unless this requirement is waived by the planning board because of unusually simple circumstances, and say also section five point nine nine D, blah, blah, blah.
So that's a waiver question, that's why we have a waiver question.
All site plans should be on a standard twenty-four by thirty-six sheet and shall be prepared at a sufficient scale to show, number one, is location and boundaries of the lot, adjacent streets, or ways, and location and owner names of all adjacent properties.
Yeah.
Existing and proposed topography, including contours, that's a whole separate page that looks...
So you do require, that's on the paperwork now, that we have to produce, and then?
Contours, location of what links to your own bodies, drainage, soils. Existing and proposed structures, including dimensions and elevations. Location of farming and loading area, and it goes on. Landscape, landscape features, that's where the landscape architect comment.
So we have to produce all these documents, and then you would maybe waive some of the requirements? Or do you submit a, rough, and then ask the waivers? And how does the, the request of...
You have to, you have to request a waiver for the, for the bylaw.
Okay, for, for contents of the site.
Correct.
Gotcha.
But before we can even look at a site plan, we need to know what the, the use is.
Okay, okay.
If we don't know what's going on inside, and we don't know, and what the occupancy is, we don't know how many parking spaces you have to provide, we don't know how many handicap spaces you have to provide by code. We don't know if, if there's gonna be buses parked, you know what I'm saying? We, we gotta know what's going on inside, not that we have any jurisdiction, other than if it's allowed by zoning. If it's a, check your zone.
We seem to fit all your zoning requirements, as far as I can see. I mean, we have a little bit of, because you wanna know our use, which is, I mean, the building inspector, and the building inspector sent us to you to get a site plan, to see if we needed a site plan. And so before he would just determine our use, so we're, we're a little bit caught here, I mean, we're just trying to figure it out.
Well, the use would fall under the, in the zoning bylaws, it would fall under the chart that we have.
Correct, they have to tell us what the use is, so that we can know how the chart...
Like our retail services, retail sort of office building.
So our proposed use, because we can't speak definitively, because our building inspector is waiting upon you to determine what you need from us before he will okay the use.
No, that's not quite the way it works.
The, the bill...
He told us to come here first. I think he was thinking he would waive some of the site plan, and then we could move forward. But that's not the case.
We, we can't waive anything until we know what the use is. And, and he can tell you, if, if you tell him you're gonna use it for X, Y, and Z, he can check code to make sure the building will accommodate that, and then he'll tell you what your, or your architect will tell you what your occupancy load is.
We, we have worked out through those details already, so...
Okay, so then, so then, once you have all that in place, then, then you can come to us with a proposal of what you need the site plan approved for. Does that make sense?
We're just, you understand, we're, we're a little tight on money, and so we're, we're struggling here because going to all these individuals is obviously very costly for us. And so we're trying to determine what we have to have done so we can save some money, which is another issue we would like to address, right?
Yeah.
The fees are like, because residential and commercial are quite different here in the bylaws, and I assume we're following that in residential.
You sure we're following what?
We're not following, following in residential, we're following in your commercial reservation, which is twelve hundred dollars plus ten cents per square foot of the building to begin, and then there's all these other costs that go along with the buggers, notification, um, other than the Sunday costs, and so it's quite expensive, so we're, we're trying to see where we, we can save on this cost. And do we waive the fees or not?
I won't speak for the board, I'll, I'll speak for myself. I would like nothing better than to see something done with a property, and it seems like you guys are going in the right direction. If there's anything that we can legally waive, anything we can legally help you with, I would be, I would be in favor of doing whatever I could to help facilitate the process as long as we stay within, you know... You know, there's life safety issues that we should, you know, those types of things that, that... That's why we look, that's why we look at, you know, one of the reasons why we look at site plan. So, I can't tell you we're gonna waive, uh, permitting, you know, that's, that's a board decision. There's certain things that if, if it's gonna have public use and the occupancy is high, you know, we may or may not need a peer review. We don't have the funds to, to hire somebody on, on, on the taxpayer's behalf to go off and do that. That has to come from the applicant. But if there's anything that we feel that it's not necessary, and we can waive to help save you some money, and if we don't feel it's, uh, it's necessary, I, I'm not speaking for the board, I speak for myself, I'd be in favor of that.
Before we go and get five copies of this and five copies of that, what, is that plan that we put before you a good start? I mean, can we hand you something of that nature with a little more detail that would, you could give us feedback on before we go to the lengths of actually producing a, a mile hour and all of those things?
Well, we wouldn't get one, we wouldn't have enough on that to, the five departments or, or the other departments that keep them.
Okay, so what you're saying is, we have to produce all those copies and be reviewed by everybody? Or Ken, do you think that we can give each of those departments information such as what we have now, with more detail, obviously, the frontage and the side borders, and then see what they would require of us?
This is where you'd have to hire somebody to review the bylaws and to make that determination, how far to go, and what has to be put on the site plan for submission.
According to bylaws, there's a lot of things, and we're trying to react to every single one of them, because a lot of them seem to be geared more towards new construction as opposed to existing construction.
I mean, we're, we're being asked questions that the board just simply can't answer at this point in time. We don't know what's going on.
To simplify things a bit, I know you're talking about private ownership of a building which has existed for many years, was used by the town. Our actual usage of this building isn't going to change tremendously. There'll still be offices, which are always were. There will still be an auditorium upstairs, which through time, over history, has been used anywhere from thirty-five people to a hundred and thirty-five people.
Two hundred, but the town should use town meeting.
There should be town meetings in that, of course. Just to get, just to simplify, I know what you're saying is that we're using it now rather than the town's, the municipal use. It's essentially going to be the same use. And no surprises inside.
You're right, but, and unfortunately, outside of our purview, there's building codes that are gonna dictate, based on new ownership, new building codes versus what the town has grandfathered under. That, and, and we don't care about that, because we're only involved in site plan approval. But it will dictate to us what the maximum capacity occupancy could be for that. So, so, based on what you just said, that you had two hundred people in there... So, so based on what you just said, that you had 200 people in there, and if you feel that you're still going to be able to put 200 people in there, okay, based on what you just said?
I actually said 135.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get...
My guess is what the use would mean.
But I'm trying just to get to a point. So in order to do that, you don't have sufficient parking. That's why...
Well, actually, yeah, I was going to say the plan that was put before you, I noticed that, okay, that's about a huge number of parking.
I'm just trying to make a point. That's why we need to know what the use is going to be, what the architect is going to specify what you're allowed to do in there, what the occupancy is. Then that'll give us some information on what you need for parking, what you need for lighting, hours of operation, what you're going to be doing in there. We will be concerned about handicap accessibility.
Well, just so you understand, yes, as Gail has presented, we have already consulted with an architect. This architect brought in a code expert from Boston, did all the measuring. So yes, we do have information on this.
The knowledge?
Which will be, which I would think would be more interesting, the building inspection.
It would be, but...
You need to know...
We need to know based on occupancy and use, that's all.
I do have one question regarding the plan. If these are all parking places on basically the northern side of the building, and this is a property line, how do you access those parking places?
It's not a problem, that is incorrect, this particular drawing, we just got it. We own up to the second line, which is on there. We own over to the lawn of the church.
You all over here?
Yep.
That's good.
Look, we're not...
They actually include, it's going to include at this point four additional landscape parking spaces.
We have plenty of space for handicapped, that's...
Yeah, I, you know, it's, this is just obviously part of a rudimentary drawing than a site plan. I guess we're trying to ascertain, you know, what should be on our site plan.
Yeah, this is very helpful, thank you. I appreciate you doing this, because it is helping us. We get as much input from you guys, you know, to steer us in the direction that, you know...
We've done a lot of that.
Like I said, speaking for myself, I'd be willing to waive any, you know, to help facilitate these certain things that would, that aren't life safety or aren't detrimental to the neighbors or anything like that. In my experience of doing these things outside of this board, you hire an architect who specializes in this, he'll, he'll, you know, there's, you know, an old saying about, you know, penny wise and dollar foolish. You know, sometimes spend a little bit more upfront, it'll save you a lot more in the long run. Like I said to you the last time you were here, you guys have done a great job of bringing it to where it is right now. It's much less than I saw than it's been since...
Since we were...
Pretty much, so...
Hopefully down the line, they will also produce some material for the town, you know, for the levels.
The spring would bring a better surprise, the finishing picture.
Who picked the colors?
We did.
Actually, we went by the scratchings that we had done back in 2015. It sounded like the original color.
Really?
These are the original...
Really?
Cheryl Williams provided the actual colors from that period. We just found out what they were by scratching from that.
Pretty sharp. I think they look pretty nice.
Yeah, it's surprising that they know how to, they know how to fix up a building. We went to the, let's face it, municipalities went to the cheapest way out, which was hallway. And the whole area went hallway, let's face it, everybody was fighting for money upstairs.
You have any other questions for us?
No, thank you.
Feel free to come back when you get to another step in the process if you need to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Get something up maybe December 9th for retail.
You have anything else on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
I just want to confirm the, um, the agenda for the next meeting. Veterans' Home World is not until the end of January.
27.
That'll be matters now on December 9th.
I made a motion to adjourn? We'll be in discussion. On the favor, on the high.